Just give mine.
It was screwed up here a couple of weeks ago, I think it all changed time and then pushed it back. Turned on, still smoke the automatic update.
Okay.
What Arizona, you know, do they like saying?
Yeah.
They they.
He's either here.
All right.
Good to listen to the United States of America, the United Republic, which is saying one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just for all.
Morning, everybody. I will call a meeting to order. And we have a quorum, I will take a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes. Second, have a motion in a second, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, Rich.
Trying to get some plans turned in by tomorrow for Dogwood paving for next year, um, looking at our farm to market account. Depending on how projects have gone, we'll see whether we're on the fringe, we were borrowed ahead quite a bit. And if we're borrowing ahead by too much, they won't let us bid projects, so it's gonna be a fine line when I turn this stuff in, whether or not to let us bid it. Until our foreign market account comes up a little bit, so we'll just kind of see how that goes, but um, trying to get them turned in for tomorrow. And then uh, I know that we're trying to get the equipment set up for uh, snow, not that we wanna talk about snow, but it's coming, so. Project wise, that's what we're looking at, the the paving projects are complete, they still gotta mill in some rumble strips on our paving and they still gotta paint um. The stop bars yet, they did come in and paint with the big trucks. But that crew doesn't do the the hand stuff, so I don't know when they're gonna come in and do the the symbols and stuff, but that stuff's on its way, for the most part, we're not gonna charge anymore um. We aren't charging liquidated damages because they got it done just in time, it's substantially complete, which means we haven't really had to. Detour traffic or anything that's caused us a problem, but I really wanted to make sure the paint was done on time, so. Um, so those projects are done, we'll get them things paid out, I gotta work with Jackie on making sure the money's where it needs to be, so we can send the payments out, so. That's all I've got for updates on. Maintenance.
The second box, they working on that progress?
Yeah, that'll be done probably tomorrow, so yeah, they'll be done with that, and we'll have to get that money pushed out too, so.
Those projects will be out of the way then?
Yep, so we'll be done with construction completely done, when they get that stuff done and we'll. Hopefully get stuff caught up and start pushing stuff out for next year. So.
That was it.
You got an email from Jackie, we all did on that report, that Worth County report. He's filled in all of her stuff, you just gotta go in there and put in what was done this year and what's on the agenda possibly for next year.
The report.
For the super.
For the super.
Oh. I'll check it, when is that, when you need that?
We need it by December seventh.
All right.
Is that?
Let me.
Yeah, so. You can make a note of that.
Plenty of time.
Yeah, we need, yeah.
Last time we.
December seventh, it's supervisor bragging report, that's what they call it.
Pretty much. We forgot him here.
Did it sound okay?
Yeah, you had every, yeah, everything, she's got everything in there and the dates already changed, all you gotta do is put in what was done. And the equipment that was bought.
Yeah.
And that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
You guys got anything else for Rich on the general part of it?
Then we'll seal bids for our equipment, like I said, the escape will open that up in Mitchell County since I've got bidders over there, but. The one we call the ninety eight copper truck, which is a Tommy lift, we've got a couple bids in. One from Mike Bodie. Two forty three fifty, two hundred and forty three dollars and fifty cents. Um. One from Sam Warren, one hundred dollars. And then. One from Josh Iverson for fifty dollars.
So if they're less than scrap, would you even?
We aren't. I don't, we just need to get rid of them, it's not really.
Well, then shouldn't you just take them the bucks?
Well, we could, but if we're gonna.
Why wouldn't you want more money out of them?
I don't know, because we're bidding them out, we're. Gonna get rid of them, I don't know if you guys wanna.
I mean, I guess we did, we should have put a starting bid if we were gonna do that, figure out scrap price was.
Last week, I took in only two hundred and twenty bucks.
I know, prices are now, yeah.
So I.
I guess maybe next time we could just do that.
We can put.
Get a estimate of what scrap is and then do a starting bid of somewhere next time.
Yeah, we're all three of those on that one with the lift?
Yeah.
Okay, is that all you got on that one?
Yep, that's all we got on the Tommy lift, so. Looks like. Mike Bodie got the the Tommy lift.
Two forty three fifty?
Yeah, yes. We only got one bid on the crew cab. And that's a fifty dollar bid, Josh Iverson. That one kind of stinks a little bit. Um, and then we've got the orange regular cab. Fifty dollars from Josh Iverson and. Two hundred and thirteen dollars from Mike Bodie.
One month.
Two hundred and thirteen dollars.
No sense, that time.
No sense, so. Didn't get a lot, but we're getting rid of some stuff, I know that some of the stuff. Bad, you know, just has mechanical issues and yeah, we probably could look at it um, from a different angle, but.
Yeah, I'd say next time.
They're used up.
If you have estimated weights on them, whatever scrap price says, let's, at least set that for a starting.
Yeah, we can do that next time.
Then you at least have a starting bit of whatever, or two hundred and fifty dollars, then.
Yeah.
Go from there and then. Nobody liked it, but.
I don't think I've ever done the minimum bid except for on. Uh, heavier piece of equipment where scrap was different, but.
Right.
So, and I don't remember what the issues were on some of those pickups, but.
Too far, essentially.
Scrap prices are down, so I mean, it's not, not too far off, I bet.
So.
I think scrap prices probably.
I think the ones that Mike got are above scrap price probably, but the other one, whatever.
We're in a motion on each one of them individually or all as a bunch?
Just one of them, do them all.
Big emotional except the winning.
The 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 winning is.
How's that, the highest bid?
The bid.
I already wanted to write that.
And if you guys are okay with when we approve it in Mitchell County, whatever the winning bid is, it's on the escape over there, you guys are gonna pay with.
Yeah, well, second, Mark's motion, I'm the.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries.
If you've got anything else for me, I'll leave and head to Mitchell County.
Anything for?
I know you guys got resolutions for that property stuff, but. We've got that.
We're good.
Okay. Good to go, you got a question?
We don't have any drainage claims, do we? So now we've got claims, we wanna, a motion to approve the claims, less the Yulin brothers, two million, four eighty nine, nine twenty eight.
A motion to approve the claims, less Yulin brothers.
We're maybe explain why we're getting it through this time, I know. I know it has to do with TIF dollars, I know my carryover balance from last year has the money in the account to pay it, and I know that we're gonna do amendment, so. From my side, it looks like we could pay it, but if it's, but with the county budget, it's different. We need to get, cause when we get the budget figured out, because it's TIF dollars, it's gotta go in. We're gonna have some pretty big dollars to throw out there with the two box culverts, that'll be done by then and then the paving, so. Just so that anybody listening understands why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just keep them, right?
So.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
So I have a motion on the claims, is there a second? Okay, I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Are there any reports, Jackie?
To approve the report.
We have a motion, uh, sheriff's report. Is there a second, I have a motion in a second to approve the sheriff's report? Any further discussion on that, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
I opposed, motion carries. Do you have any payroll eligibility? Uh, salary changes or anything like that? I didn't see any liquor licenses come through.
Nope.
Uh, resolution number twenty twenty three dash thirty four.
You have the offer too.
Worth County, what's that? Worth County Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty four. A resolution for entering purchase agreement, recent Kennison property, whereas there is now a large commercial building located at the east part of Northwood. Worth County, Iowa, that would provide office space for the Worth County Conservation Office at a regional price. And whereas the Worth County Supervisors believe it will be in the best interest of the citizens of Worth County and the Worth County Conservation Office. For Worth County, Iowa, to purchase said building at a price of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And whereas it is necessary and legally prudent to further review and obtain a title opinion on that. Above said property, therefore, it is resolved, hereby resolved, the current chair. Was authorized to sign under purchase agreement for purchase of said building. With a tentative closing date of on or about February first, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty four?
So.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? If not, roll call votes, maybe.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Lowbird, aye. The resolution is duly adopted. Swan.
What, is that what have to be authorized?
You want to use your hand?
I don't know, we're gonna ask Jackie.
Uh, I have just gave them. In the season.
Look in the back, ready to see if they had a motori stamp, you have to sign that, instead of otherwise.
I think so. Obviously, but.
I don't.
Don't think it does.
I think I'm just testing.
Do they need to sign it before we do?
One's gotta sign it before the other does, either way.
Just to find out.
They don't sign it if you don't get your money. I'm sure they'll sign it.
They don't sign it, we don't get the building.
But hey. Pretty sure.
There's that one. Next, we have Worth County Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty five. Uh, this is a resolution for purchase of the Stevens' farmland. Whereas Michael Stevens and Judy Stevens own real estate on the northeast edge of Northwood Worth County, Iowa, that would be desirable location with the site of a building. Project for secondary roads. And whereas Michael Stevens and Judy Stevens are willing to sell the approximate seven point nine three acres for fifteen thousand dollars an acre. For a total cost of one hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
I gotta fix that.
No worries.
Yeah, that didn't, that doesn't correlate with that number. It's the one twenty, I'll just. It's the one twenty one.
So.
Eight, eight point oh eight acres. I got the new contract, I didn't get the.
Yeah.
I'll fix.
You know that's it, you dig for it.
I'll fix it and. At least I have amended one.
Hundred twenty thousand.
Twenty one two. You can find this, but I'll have to do a new one though, but I've got the changes on there.
Okay. Whereas Michael Stevens, Judy Stevens are willing to sell the approximate eight point zero eight acres for.
That's the gross acres.
Gross acres. For fifteen thousand dollars an acre for a total cost of one hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred dollars. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Chair of the Worth County Board of Supervisors authorized under a purchase agreement. For the real estate described as parcel number zero three two eight four five four zero zero seven. With the closing date on or about February first, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty five?
So.
Well, second that.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion on that? Roll call votes, maybe.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Lowbird, aye. Resolution is duly adopted, I won't even sign that one.
Oh, roll call.
Already, already did it? I'll slow down.
Sorry.
There's that. Um, next we have. You guys all seen an email come from Mark on the contract amendment to Worth County and WSB USA, Environment and Infrastructure Incorporated. There are some changes that they had to make in that contract. Um, is there a motion to approve the amended contract, amendments to the contract?
So.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries.
Can we back up for a sec, we should probably go payroll.
Oh. Did I blow past that?
Well, I just, it was claims and I didn't.
Is there a?
I'll make a motion to pay roll.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to for the payroll claims, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I, opposed, motion carries. Now, we are down to discussion, possible action on the treasure building roof posts for replacement. You guys both seen those posts come through?
Yeah, I just didn't see it on there, they may know Midwest can get it done this year then.
Mike called down there to talk to. Brock. Brock, and he wasn't there, so Scott said it's questionable, he's, I asked him what it would take and he said. We gotta be, for the glue to dry, we have to be above freezing. So he said you might get it done if the weather holds, you may not get it done. And on the uh, quote from Alpha Roofing, he said. You know, he said, we could get this done yet this year if the weather is nice, so basically that's where it stands on most of the situation. The only thing I noticed in the difference between the two of them was. And that I called Colter down there on, was there is no manufacturer's warranty on it. Through Alpha Roofing, the only roof, the only warranty you would have is their five year warranty. And then on Midwest, you have a, they are going to furnish the manufacturer's fifteen year warranty on defects in the chair and workmanship. So that was the difference there, other than the price, uh, the other thing. Is one of them mentioned, Alpha mentioned that they would buy all new metal for the North Gable. Cause he said that metal is all shot, and of course I couldn't, I didn't. I didn't get a hold of Brock, so I didn't know whether he was gonna replace that or not, he just didn't state that in his quote right here.
Wasn't that vertical, not on that one? I thought they were gonna reuse everything on the side and place the front of that too.
They're gonna, both of them gonna reuse the metal that's there with the existing building to the east. And then they said they were gonna replace the metal up front. But Alpha says, I will buy new metal for the North Gable.
Yeah, for sure.
They're repeating this, so, uh, pretty finished coping that on front here at football.
Well, yeah, but we're talking about, this is the north one, that's the north.
Oh, the north, okay, I thought you were talking the front wall.
No, the front wall, they're both, yeah, both, both of them got the front walls, but he's saying he will buy new metal for the North Gable, that would be. On this side in the alley. So, and I didn't get a chance to talk to him. He was gone. So, that's all, only information I've got on him.
And there's always a chance that when they rip it up, they'll find more.
And that's in here, you know.
That's in the, that one, yeah.
This, that's in Midwest here, is, you know, if there's. The roofing, you know, if there's something dry rotting up there. And I would imagine.
It would be a good chance. Where can we pay for that?
I have it in the budget, remember?
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
So then it just comes down to. And Alpha Roofing Company was twenty thousand, one forty seven ninety four. And Midwest Roofing Company was seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars.
I bumped it up thirty just in case they do find things, hopefully that's all they find.
Now we got three thousand dollars in prison with Midwest. But they do find anything, so I'm sure. I guess I would, I'd make a motion to approve the Midwest. Uh, constructions, uh, estimate for the roof and see if they give it up.
You had a motion in a second, is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries.
Since you got a prayer ballot, you don't have to sign, is that one signed? Or is that just the?
I could have, but I s- I made some notes, I made some notes on it.
I'll take care of that too. Those had to come up and see me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I gotta come up anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I. I made a few notes on it, if you'd like.
Probably.
So.
Sounds good.
Next, we have a budget amendment discussion.
So I kinda already started that, then. I gave you the amendment, basically what it was is, there was a sheriff's vehicle that was totaled and um, let's bring that back in and doing the. The um, credit for the amount that we received and then the same for the vehicle. Um, the cabinets that um, Dan's installing probably now. And um, and then I threw in thirty thousand for ambulance. From the ARP fund, I don't know if you wanna do it or not, but I have to put something if you are gonna do it. Um, roads, I put four point five million. Cause Rich said the most, I hope this is right, but the most you'd need is five million in there, that's what I think is in his DOT budget. Um, I put thirty thousand for bill, thirty thousand more for building, maintenance and repair. Wish there was already twenty in there, but I figure we better keep that cushion because you know what happens around here. And then NIAH code was a little bit more than um, I had budgeted, so I put another two hundred in for that, but then that'll be. Okay, so that the other money that's paid out, it doesn't bump the, bump the total over. So that brings me to four million, six hundred and sixteen, three ninety two. And if you guys are okay with it, it'll be in the paper on Wednesday. Thank you very much, Chris, and um, the meeting can be on November twentieth.
And we. Can we do a budget amendment before we've actually decided to use ARP money for EMS?
Put it in there, we don't have to use it.
Okay, gotcha.
No, but if it's there and we need to pay the bill, then.
Then we can actually do it.
We should pay it, otherwise it'd be another budget amendment.
I didn't know if we could put the card.
And you don't have, you don't have to appropriate it either.
Right.
Gotcha.
It's just there so that if it does get spent, then it's been through the channels.
Well, if you're okay with those numbers, that's what I'm running with.
Any discussion on that? Is there, is there a motion?
I don't, I don't need a motion.
Oh, you don't need a motion, okay.
That would do the public portion.
As long as you guys are good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go forward, Chris.
Um, any. Water system, you have your herd back from Jason, and they're gonna, did they ever get anything back from the DNR?
I have, or I'm not DNR portion of it. If he's got the pre-approval, I don't know. They're, they're, they're struggling down there, they're limited on. Staffing and.
Well, we've noticed that.
Yeah, and it's, it's everywhere, same answer to that project that took, took almost two years.
Oh.
To get figured out, so. And that was because, yeah, personnel, so. That's, that's, it's a process, you think our process is slow, go one level higher.
Yeah, and if you can't get hell.
Yeah.
So I just, I would imagine he hasn't got back to us with the water sewer rates either.
Uh, we're hoping to meet on Friday. He's waiting, let me get the last confirmation from one of the landowners out there.
Gotcha.
Hopefully the end of this week, we get that though.
Uh, Melissa is gone today, she is at Butler County, visiting the new. Uh.
Listen.
Development down there, I guess you might say. She told me too, but I can't remember the name.
Uh, Butler, London, St. Park?
Yeah, there you go. Butler, London, St. Park. EMS continued discussion. Did you, you said you were gonna maybe see how much they roughly have down there?
For.
A bill?
Twenty four thousand. Um. Fifty two calls, forty eight were billed, five hundred and twelve, point four thousand. I got a report from Marilyn on Friday, it said she has forty, so I gotta check back with the parole and see.
Up until the first quarter?
Yeah. Maybe they didn't blow it sometime or something. July first.
I got a report from her on Monday or Tuesday, for July, August, September, they were at twenty nine. And then she ran another report till the end of this month, it was like, the numbers you're coming up with.
Forty. Forty, of, of that, yeah, of that's one. Let's see, the exits, numbers are there, but. See what he says, but yeah, that's, they said they had fifty two. That were dispatched, four were canceled, and forty eight were billed. So. I'll check on.
But you didn't know what the ending date was on what he had. He thought it was by the quarter, though.
Yeah.
How come they're not matching us?
We'll find out. We all gotta get with uh, Maryland anyways and find out on some of their zones of where, where they actually took place to see. Sometimes the senior center or the, they call on their own, they correct call down there, they don't go through dispatch.
Oh, you mean the care center down in Manville?
Yeah, well, and they're, they're changing that. They've been, he did say that there was like one or two calls that went through that way, and they called them and said, you're not supposed to do that. You're supposed to call nine one one and just let them know that it's a transport, if it's not emergent, that it's just a transport to Mason. Cause they will still page out first responders, but then. It's not a big press because it's just a transport they need, cause they're trying to get away from that. Direct call transporting down there, they were trying to stay out of that for two years, but. Uh, but it does happen, yeah, it does happen.
It's hard for us to track when they do that.
Right. Yeah.
So then are, where are they at with the twenty eighty agreements, cause those are supposed to be signed before you guys wanted to pay anything, right?
Yep, great, yeah. I'll call, check with the parole on the twenty eighties and then the calls.
I'll check with Joe in Forest City on the twenty eighty agreements and what they've got for calls. I did get a text from Carl had called Blake. And they had three times they came into Worth County or Northwoods ambulance area. And he said, we're not going to bill you for him because of the great job you're doing. So.
I think it was, they were, one was a tier and one was canceled, the way I understood it too, so.
Yeah, I don't know about that one.
Yeah.
I did not talk to Carl, Blake did, Carla called him, or maybe he called, no, Carla called him, so, I think, but. Yeah. That really, boy, it's hard for us to track it up here, when they're calling on their own. So. Anything else you got on us for that?
Uh, we had a, we last night, for our area, get our petitions ready. Um, we got all our landowners identified and everything, so hopefully, well, the next week and a half or two weeks, we're starting, going door to door. So I have petitions for that area to start EMS district, so. That's our plan, see if we can draw enough money to take care of ourselves.
Have you heard anything? Rick said to me at the meeting Thursday night that there was a meeting coming up, right?
Could be, I have, yeah, go.
This one's on their own, which was. This Wednesday, there's one, there's one I have a contact.
That's what he said.
Yo, Thompson's, Danville trustee, he said he's going to that one on Wednesdays.
Yeah. Cause I was quite proud of the south end and the west edge, cause their average, the two year average we had for them, they were, they were way down in calls. And I thought they were, but now when you're telling me that.
Yeah, that's, and I talked to, I talked to Carl, then I talked to Marilyn, and the numbers, there was discrepancy, and I'm like, I want to look into that a little more, so. She was gonna.
Gotcha.
What's wrong with it?
Okay, any. Anything from people service that you guys got? I don't have anything.
No.
And is Josh the new guy out there right now? Or is he still running it?
He's still gotta be around, but until. Josh gets in there or gets properly trained.
Training.
It's kind of a unique situation with that wastewater plant out there. Is that, it doesn't have a grade title on it, so it doesn't say that you need to be grade three, Mark, you can run it if you're properly trained.
Okay.
Because it's semi-public, which I don't understand that. Because it's semi-public, which I don't understand that either, it's.
Semi-public.
Uh, yeah. So.
Senior terms.
So basically, you know more about that than, and I went, I went right to the top of the wastewater division of Des Moines and.
So people shouldn't be charging this.
I agree with you. Cause technically we don't need a grade three wastewater operator. So it's, it's, and I think, basically said, as long as somebody's properly trained to run it, you don't have to have a grade license, and I took it as a slap in the face because
No, I'm sorry.
we're held to a standard, we have to have licenses for a lagoon, which is a pond, which Mother Nature controls everything again. That's a mechanical plant. I said, you guys got this ass backwards and that's a legislature thing, you gotta go through it to change rules, you know? It's, I do not agree that one hundred percent of all, so. Do that later on down the road.
Yeah.
So.
Um. Department had discussions. Was there anybody on the screen? I didn't, I clicked off of it here. Um, next discussion, sheriff scheduling. Close session for Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five. Did you wanna go into closed session here?
Yeah.
Then I will make a motion to go into close, I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Recession.
Oh, I gotta recess the regular meeting. Could you close the door, Mark?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then we'll holler when you're up next.
Oh, hey, what?
Well, I on supervisor stuff. I, I wanna know if he wanted to put anything in there as far as the mitigation plan.
Oh.
So, I will.
I'm gonna turn a motion.
Uh, did I recess it?
Yes, you recessed it.
Then I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So. Second.
I have a motion of second. Roll call votes, Smeedy.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Lowbird, aye. We are in closed session.
Let me. We're now reconvene.
Uh, reconvene the regular meeting. And we'll do supervisor weekly reports. AJ?
Um, I didn't think I had anything last. They love.
No, I didn't.
Uh, Mark?
I had public health and Friday. Through everything, um, budget set, give us some that's some special reports they gotta do for different things, for those cores and goods for the people that are in public health. Also discussed, um, we're still with the burners, and not every much luck. And we had a good discussion on, we really feel we're pretty competitive on wages, we can't compete with mail, it's from up there in the app, but it was in Minnesota with the unions and stuff, but. Um, so for right now, we're, we're discussing possibility and figure out how to do that, or maybe offer more, nobody really says, we've had a couple of interviews, they always usually turn down the offer. Comes down to salary, but they don't really say what they need and also discuss the future budget coming up, um, I think it really tough to look at and reason some of these wages and settle. A just good meeting, um, Jesse and the crew are holding together, we got somebody going up maternity leave real soon, so we're gonna be short there too. But okay, I figured they can make it work, they got some part-time to do, they step up and help, so. That's all I have, I guess.
Okay, I had hazardous mitigation plan and, uh, he kind of worked us through what we need to do for each one of the cities and the two schools and the county. Uh, we did get a list of grants that you can apply for, I didn't realize there was that many grants that you could apply for in that case. Do you have anything else, Mark, on it that you'd like to say, other than the fact of you had asked that night, the question of, what do we do with the towns that don't, aren't involved, and at least so far we've had three meetings and their criteria was attend one of the three. And we've got towns that don't, and it might be such a deal that they just don't wanna mess with FEMA grants. But without, without doing it there, you know, that was one of the things he said, Mark said, was, does the county cover it, or, or do we just, you, you, if you have a disaster you're just, don't expect any help from FEMA on it at all. So, I'll let you.
I, I think, you know, that's the, the gist of it is, you know, we will do what we can, but we, we can't, you know, we don't have the endless resources that can fill in for them either, and he did, the project manager from WSP said, there is, you know, assistance for these small communities, even small counties that if you are awarded a FEMA grant, that there is you know, there's either funding or, or assistance available to help you manage a FEMA grant, should you get it, so I you know, don't, don't be afraid of that and don't let that stop you from participating in these in these steps, you know, needing to go through and do this stuff, it's, you know, it looks, you know, at the help take it, looks daunting and stuff like that, and it is somewhat a little bit, but I think, you know, once you get into there, there is assistance, there is help to get you through it and and stuff like that, and, and, you know, you won't have to do it alone, that's what I'm saying, so.
Um, but if those, the towns that didn't participate, they aren't even eligible.
They, yeah, they, I mean if they don't, yeah, if they, yeah, if they don't, you gotta give us some, give us some input to help build the plan, you know, help renew the plan and review it and revise it, as we, you know, we gotta have some input. We can't, we can't say for you what your priorities are, it's not our place to do that, so.
Right.
Nope.
So we can't pick a project.
Try.
Yeah. Other than that, we'll keep going.
We can put the cards up the table, if they don't wanna play them, then they get in.
So, that's what I had, that's all I had last week. Thank you, Mark. Just stick around. But, um. Next week's agenda or future agendas? I have a question. Who wants to go to the Winnebago River Watershed Management Meeting, and who wants to go to the District Two Supervisors Meeting?
Why do they always get that at this?
Oh, we gotta kind of split us.
Really?
We gotta.
It looks dead.
Yeah. We decided we were gonna go to the Winnebago River one, and of course, somebody needs to go to the District Two Supervisors meeting. Did you give that report? So, and I'm wide open on either one of them. I guess basically I you've got Shell Rock right now, right?
Hmm.
And you've got Cedar? There might be down the road, I might take Cedar, and then you can take Winnebago, cause they're in your territory.
Yeah, I'll go to Winnebago.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna District Two, that's something of that.
Yeah.
And I'll go to District Two.
Yeah.
But we just need to list it on there, so, as to who's going where.
Should go on.
They said you gotta go get parts or something, don't you?
No.
Make it a worthwhile trip.
Yeah, and District Two one is December seventh, too, so.
I'll add that in there, forgot to put the date.
Yeah. Anything else on there, you guys? I don't see any changes. If there's not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we are officially adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.